Good evening. I call to order the City of Berkeley regular meeting of the City Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, April 24th, 2018. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McLean, how are you this evening?
Fine ma'am, and yourself?
Good, good. Could you please call the roll?
Kapilansky?
Here.
Murad?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Shadle?
Here.
Kempner?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Barnett?
Present.
And Buckler?
Here.
I believe Mr. Tangari has had a work commitment, so he will be absent this evening.
Yes, I had that in my notes from last month. Thank you. We have an agenda that is put forth that was emailed out last week from Mr. McLean. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda with the change.
Okay, what is the change?
The change is to reverse items three and two, the capital improvement plan, and item two, and a discussion of the planning consultant to item three.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion?
Support it.
All right. Is there a discussion on that? Can you call the vote, please?
Murad?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Kapilansky?
Yes.
And Buckler?
Yes. We have the minutes from the regular meeting of March 27th, 2018, that were provided in our packet. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Are there any comments or changes that need to be made on the minutes that anyone found in their reading of them? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Shadle?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Kapilansky?
Yes.
Murad?
Yes.
And Buckler?
Yes. Okay. Communications. Mr. McLean, would you like to discuss what's in our communications list tonight? We had a few more additions, it looks like, between now and when this was printed.
Yes. Commissioner Tangari asked if I would place the minutes from the March meeting of the Downtown Development Authority in the packet, which you have before you. DDA Director Carmody had a memo to the Planning Commission regarding parking, which is also included in your packet under communications. We did have some resonant communications. Mr. Paul Jordan sent an email, which you have a hard copy before you, and Mr. Joshua Hunter had some comments as well. You have before you in hard copy.
Okay. All right. So now is the time in our program where we will entertain citizen comments for any item not on the agenda tonight. So will you please approach the podium, state your name, city of residence, and note that all comments are limited to four minutes and under. Thank you.
Hi, Wendy Zabrowski, Berkeley, Michigan. I shared with each and every one of you a memo, which I'd also like included in the minutes of this meeting, in response to Vivian Carmody's DDA proposal. I'm not sure it's a memo from her. She wrote the memo to try to have the parking requirements for the DDA basically cut in half and more than the changes made in most recent, in 2009. That was less than 10 years ago. She's also requesting the power to consider this more detailed information determining what number of onsite spaces as needed for site plan approval. As we discussed, as we are discussing the Public Participation Plan, the PPP, I would like to bring up the fact that neither I nor my husband were included in such suggested changes. I don't believe anyone in the residential area that is near downtown has either. I believe this is a dangerous suggestion, and just recently, the City Council meeting brought up the continued problem that I had, brought up with businesses overflow parking into the residential area. I don't believe this is a good idea for the DDA, directed to totally ignore the residents in trying to solve parking problems. I invite everyone of you to check out on, say, a Thursday night on Gardner and Tyler, south of 12 Mile. The parking is just horrendous, and it gets only worse this time of year as the outdoor seating gets opened up.
Are there any other citizen comments? Okay, thank you. So the first order of business is item number one, special land use request, SLU 0118, 2838 and 2850 Coolidge Highway. So it's application PSU-01-18, I think. Are the applicants here? So please introduce yourself and tell us about your project, please.
Daniel Stockeve. We're opening a shared office space at 2838 and 2850. It's adjoining office spaces. There already is an opening in those two office spaces. And we're just proposing this office space to continue being a first-floor office space in the downtown district zoning. The shared office space will, is mainly for like young entrepreneurs or people that, people that just want like a big office environment and have conference rooms, printing abilities for a flat fee rather than renting a space elsewhere that don't have those abilities. So we're just hoping to continue using this office space as an office space.
All right. So questions from the Planning Commission? Who would like to go first? Mr. Richardson?
I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry.
Daniel Stockeve.
Stockeve, thanks for coming tonight. How many, I have some questions about your facility. Can you explore with us the capacity that you're planning on? How many people roughly?
Well, the space itself is about 4,600 square feet. Usable area, probably about 3,500 when you take away, you know, bathrooms and utility rooms and stuff like that, based on just code-wise. I mean roughly, you know, between, you know, 35 and 40 people. A lot of those people probably only use that as, you know, as an office space to meet their clients. That's one of the advantages of having been a shared office space. You get the conference rooms, you get the printing abilities. Hopefully, in this downtown area, most people from Berkeley would just, you know, ride their bike, or there is a municipal lot that's less than 500 feet away.
You don't anticipate 35 or 40 people be there like at any one time, right? That it'll be somewhat less, maybe half of that on average?
Oh, yeah. And there's eight parking spots behind the building right now, but there probably wouldn't need to be. The schematic design, which I apologize for, once you print, scan, print and scan, it really-
Apology accepted.
Yeah. But it is a schematic design. There's no like trash enclosure in that scheme. There is a garage that could be demolished if needed, but with the municipal lot just 500 feet away, and the parking spaces behind the building, we should be okay. There shouldn't be a lot of people during the day there.
What's, the application notes, there was offices there before. Do you know who was in there before?
Zen Design.
Zen Design. And the other one was just, I think someone just rented out the space. They did something with Legos. I think it was-
Legos?
Yeah. There were a lot of Legos in there.
I hope you saved them.
No, no, he took all of them.
Eight spaces behind the two?
I mean, I could be, I could be wrong by one or two. I mean, we just purchased the property a couple of weeks ago. So if I count right with tandem spots, because there is an indent, it's about six to eight at least.
So I guess the question I want to kind of hone in on, you're a little vague about your parking, the adequacy of your parking. Have you thought through your parking requirement for this type of facility? Can you elaborate a little bit on why you think you will be okay?
Well, with the on-street parking and the parking behind the building, and it not, I think, what was it? There's a section, non-residential use within 500 feet of municipal parking lot without crossing a major thoroughfare-
Well, I understand there's no requirement that you provide it, but I think we're concerned about it, or at least it's an issue that goes to one of the general criteria that we do have to meet. So that's why I'm asking.
My knowledge of these shared office spaces in other communities downtown Detroit, there's a few of them in Royal Oak, not as established as the ones in Detroit. A lot of people tend to commute because there's people who live in the area. So down, people that live in Berkeley, which I have a few friends that already do, you know, live on Harvard or Eaton, they want to ride their bike to work. So with that and the parking spaces we have behind the building, I don't see that this should be an issue.
Just one other question along that line. Do you intend to provide bicycle parking?
Yep, that'll be one of the bicycle storage. It's not in this schematic design, but we're planning on it right now.
Okay.
You know, with bike pumps and, you know, if anything happens, you get to fix your bike.
Okay, that's all the questions I had for now.
Any other commissioners?
Hi.
Barnett?
Mr. McLean, is it zoned office now?
It is not.
What is it zoned as?
I believe that is downtown district, and offices are permitted as a special use.
Or on the second floor, which it's only a single-story, single-story building.
The reason I'm asking this question is, I'm the former chair of this Planning Commission, and about a year and a half ago, two years ago, we had a request to put office space in the downtown area on Coolidge and another area of Coolidge. And when we took it, when I took it before the Planning Commissioner, or with the City Council, which this has to go, because we just make a recommendation to council, I didn't get a very good reception from the City Council, taking what is potentially retail space and converting it to office space, or vice versa. And so I'm a little bit uneasy with this. I didn't get a good reception. They did pass it, but they essentially said, hmm, you know, watch it. And so I'm a little uneasy with this project. Now I know Zen was in there, and I assume that they were doing more office-type things. I don't know exactly what they were designed for and whatever they did in there. So I'm just a little bit uneasy with this project going forward.
Yeah.
From where I've been before, and I don't have to go before council with it. So it'll be, the lady next to me on my right will be there. And four members of the council are still there, one of them now being the mayor. So there are three new members. Whether they've changed their attitudes towards that, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, of course, bringing like a shared office space, I mean, those people would create, would go to the surrounding retail shops and promote business for those people. You know, people who work want to go to lunch, to go to Bagger Dave's, or there's a bagel shop right across the street. Put another retail shop would be beneficial to the city, but having people in the city that go to those shops regularly would be a big beneficial, greatly beneficial.
I've used that argument, too. I've made that argument. So I know, I know the feeling here.
The business was for sale for, I want to say about a year, so a lot of people weren't looking at it, and we're just trying to, you know, put something new in the downtown area of Berkeley.
I think it's a very interesting idea. I think it's a, this is the kind of thing I would expect to see, maybe on Greenfield, if we ever develop Greenfield. This is the kind of thing.
We tried, but it didn't happen.
I know it hasn't happened yet, but that's the place I would see this being very-
Well, being on Coolidge, you get a lot more stuff by rather than on Greenfield.
Yes, I know you do. But those are my comments, and I'm just a little bit uneasy with the whole thing. So we'll see how it goes. But I think it's a very interesting idea. I like the idea.
Mr. Smith?
I also like the idea. As the applicant said, it brings traffic into the downtown, and I mean, when I say traffic, I mean people, not automobiles necessarily. There'll be some of those. These things tend to attract, we call them tenants, what do you call them, customers, what do you call them, clients?
It would be clients.
Thank you. They tend to attract clients from the local area. Again, they want to ride their bikes and things. I know Zen Design was in there. Does anybody know what the other space was? Does anybody?
I thought it was all them.
It was owned by the same woman, and it was like the communications half of her. So she did design on one side, she did communications on the other.
Okay.
Moved the entire operation to Regisville.
Okay. Dave, I remember that. We didn't get a warm and fuzzy, we got a cold and prickly from the City Council.
Yep.
However, I believe, and I could be wrong, I believe those were both commercial space, it was a commercial space-
It was a commercial space.
That someone wanted to put office into.
Yep, it was.
It was, yeah.
It was the eye place that he wanted to do his CFA.
So that was a situation that it was a retail commercial turning into an office. Here we have a situation where it's been an office for X number of years. So, and it's a new, not new, but a different office concept. So I agree with you on the fact that, and I remember that.
Yeah.
But in this situation, because it already is office, we're not really adding-
No, I know we're not.
-to the office. So I'd be more inclined to accept it in this particular case. And I know we have a couple storefronts on Coolidge that are leaving and going to 12 Mile combining.
Right.
Yeah. So there's another opportunity for some more retail. But like I said, I agree with you. I remember it. But I think in this situation, it's not, it's already office. So I don't think we're really hurting that, hurting it in that respect. That's my comments.
Any other comments, Ms. Kapilansky?
I had a quick question. I noticed on the sketch that you provided, it says garage doors were going to be added to the front. I just wondered what kind of facade?
Yeah, we decided to scratch that after this was, it's just, it's too noisy on Coolidge. So just leaving maybe a back patio with a garage door back there would be a better solution for a little bit of outdoor space.
Okay, I was just curious. I tend to agree that I think this would fit well here. It's a little bit of a different kind of office use, that hopefully you'll have more people coming and going than you would at a typical office, since they might not keep regular hours. But I did wonder, what are the hours for this particular place? When would it be open for people to-
I would have to discuss this with my business partners, but it would just be normal, like 8:30 to 5:30 kind of a deal.
Okay, so not evening office hours, you're not thinking?
No. They have 24, 24/7 access, because it would be, clients have rent little spaces or desks or little offices. So they have, would have a key fob to enter the building.
Okay.
But the receptions that would be there would only be there 8 to 5.
All right, that's all. Any other comments?
I'm sure. Shadle? Just a couple of questions. If you could talk more to, I think it's a great idea, actually. I think it would be a nice addition. But can you just talk just a little bit to clients versus visitors? I mean, in a space like this, would you anticipate that there would be many visitors coming to the clients to meet in the conference room or whatnot?
I mean, I wouldn't think there'd be too many visitors. I mean, if you have a, you know, young, I wouldn't say young, but entrepreneurs that don't have an office, that they'll meet up at Starbucks, it's not a good thing to do. So like, if you did have a meeting, they would meet there, would probably have visitor parking spaces out back. But like, someone who, I flip houses in Berkeley, and I've been through, go through the city for all that stuff. It's nice having an office that's off-site, and I don't tend to meet with a lot of people. It's just mainly, I just want a space to put everything in a space where I can be with a bunch of people that, that could be, I'm lost in words here, I guess, motivate me to do, to do things during the day, because when you're at home, you just, you tend to just watch TV.
I think part of my concern with the visitors is the visitor parking. So if you were to dedicate a certain number of parking spaces to, for, whatever it is, out back, then that certainly eliminates some of the parking for the clients. And I would want to ensure that that does not consistently spill over onto the side streets, that the public parking is utilized for that.
Yeah, and we could take that in consideration. I mean, we could do 30-minute parking, so people don't park there all day long.
Any other comments?
I have a question. Do we have a count of how many parking spots are in that municipal lot?
I can find out.
Okay. I mean, I know it's not the most huge lot, but I think it should be able to handle.
I don't know that it matters. I mean, I think the ordinance is that if it's within, even if it was a commercial space, if it's within 500 feet, if they opened a retail spot and they expected, you know, they could expect 30 people to come shop there, the parking lot, it's not relevant in the sense of if it's within 500 feet.
Well, no, but if it was spilling over into, if that was so limited that it was spilling over into the neighborhood, then with a special use, we have, that falls under one of our criteria. I like the idea. I think it's a very interesting thing, and I think the parking, I think the parking should probably work itself out, because people will be coming and going ideally, right?
Yeah, I think that's an ongoing process of just Berkeley in general. I mean, you go over a Oak, there's still, you know, parking issues. I mean, they totally addressed it over the last year with the new parking garages, but I understand where you guys are coming from. But being in a downtown area, I mean, that's where people want to be.
Tim, I have a question for you. I know this, because it's within 500 feet, it gets, it doesn't need to be parking requirements. Office space normally has, what's the ratio? Do you know it offhand in the ordinance, or anyone else?
One to 225.
Okay.
So that's usable area. So if I did 3,500, 3,000 square feet, I'd only need about-
So when you're thinking you have about eight behind you?
Yeah, if there's two of them, they would be tandem. But there'll be about 13 parking spaces that would be required to have about. If you count the parking that's behind and then the parking that's on the street, I would get the amount that I would need for code.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that's what, yeah, we're discussing. You said 16? Right, 16 would be required. All right. I think this is a good use also, because I know that, I know retail establishments, period, are struggling more and more with the amount of internet sales that are happening. So we might start seeing that some of our spaces are becoming empty because of lack of people getting into retail businesses. So, but I think this is a good use, and I think it can be very well utilized, too. I mean, I think there'll be, like you said, I think we'll see a lot of, potentially even people outside of Berkeley coming to rent space here and discovering what Berkeley has to offer. So, that's it.
All right.
I meant to ask, are you adding any square footage to the existing building?
No.
Are you making any modifications to the facade, significant modifications to the facade?
There's some shelling of the brick that we need, that need to be addressed, or probably do some facade, new windows.
You're not changing anything, you're just going to replace-
Nope, yep.
-what you have. So like garage is existing in the patio?
The garage is already existing. I don't want a garage. It just happens to be there.
We can arm wrestle over who gets to use it, so.
So I have a couple of comments. One, I rather like the idea. Having worked independently for a while, I found staying focused at home, and I would have liked a flexible space to go work in, one that had a printer that wasn't in my basement, that I had to go find the cord for, and somebody that, you know, appropriate places to take meetings and to, you know, kind of have a work environment. That was my concept of a work environment. I also think it brings interesting transient foot traffic into the area, because these are not individuals that are going to come work typically from nine to five in the space. So they're going to be in and out, lunch, bringing in clients for meetings, getting coffee, getting bagels, getting lunch, moving up and down, picking up their dry cleaning, picking up gifts and whatnot. So it is, I think, a good use of the space to mix up that corridor versus a static office space, like down at SH, or what are they, Stan Tech now, or something, where-
Stan Tech.
-just leave at lunchtime. So those were my comments. So if you don't mind sitting down, we'll take comments from the public, and thank you. And I ask individuals to come up to the podium. Please state their name and city of residence, and keep comments to four minutes or less, please.
Vivian Carmody from the DDA. I have not yet met Dan. I did hear that a co-working space was coming from Tim. I will say that from the DDA's perspective, and from a Main Street downtown perspective, this is a use that we would actually embrace. The fact that it's going into current office works in that district. If it was retail prior, I would, you know, not be as supportive, because we don't want to lose what's currently retail, like what happened with Andy's building, which by the way, he's trying to convert back to retail now. So we'll see if that works. But yeah, I mean, co-working, any kind of, you know, efforts that we can make to encourage entrepreneurialship and, you know, that kind of creative mindset and bring them into our downtown district, particularly there in Coolidge, because I think it's a little bit more eclectic and kind of bohemian. You know, I certainly wouldn't want to see either of the 2D and Tallulah spaces go to office. So from a downtown DDA perspective, I think this is a nice use for that space.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, Annalise Petrus. I live on Franklin. I actually live two and a half blocks from this location. I did not get on the mailing list. I must be outside of the footprint range. But what I do want to convey is my experience living on Franklin, is that there are people who park in front of my house on Saturdays to go to businesses on Coolidge. There are also people who park in front of my house on a daily basis who work at businesses on Coolidge. There is a counseling center just to the south of this that has many, I want to call them like burst events, where they have meetings. There's a lot of parking on Franklin from that. People who weave through the neighborhood to turn, to make a left through the neighborhood rather than onto Coolidge for a left. So while I am very supportive of this kind of space, it's actually one I would feel comfortable walking to, and I'd like to utilize and be a part of it. However, that being said, I don't feel like the municipal parking is truly capturing all of the businesses in the area that utilize that, especially because of the counseling center. I suspect that the key thing that could, that needs to be addressed is whether this office space has events that brings upwards of the 35 people, like say there's a seminar. I mean, the WeWork office often has happy hours and seminars, and when you have these big burst events, it's, how can these businesses handle that in a better manner? They provide a shuttle, provide an agreement with another business that isn't working at that time? Just some effort to plan, and because really, the- the, at the end of the day, there's no recourse. If it doesn't work out and it's super busy, there's nothing that can be done about it. Like, are we add, gonna add more municipal parking after we have a problem? So while I am fully in support of this, I just would like to see some early measures because of the amount of people that this brings.
Are there any other comments? With that, um, what is the will of the planning commission? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion. I guess I'm back.
God, I missed you early.
Hmm? Um, I would like to make a motion and let me say, I understand, um, I'm sorry. The, thank you, Elise. Uh, she has very good comments when she talks. I understand uh, her concern. And I guess the question wasn't answered. Do, does the applicant plan to have events? Where, where'd you go?
Can you come back up to the microphone, please?
I didn't want to open the discussion here, but uh-
Uh-
Do you have plans for events? You know, a big balloon events where everybody-
As, as of now, no. I mean, WeWork is a co-sharing office space like what we were trying to open, but they are more based on those big events. We're, we're more providing a space for people um, for an office.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, whether this is office or retail, you're gonna get X amount of people showing up. And I, I would actually believe, and I, I, I can't quantify this, that an office space that draws locally, if that is at the case, and I, I believe this probably is, will draw less vehicle traffic than a successful retail of the same size, especially on a Saturday and a weekend. So I just wanted to address her comment, but I appreciate it. So I'd like to make a motion to, and I guess what we recommend-
Recommend.
Recommendation.
City Council, uh, special land use SLU oh-one eighteen for approval, uh, uh, for uh, for city council. I didn't say that right, but that's, you know what I mean. And I have a couple of conditions, if I may. Let's see a bike rack or two on the drawing. Um, and I would strongly suggest to the client on this well-rendered architectural plan, when he says he's gonna have thirty-five or forty people, don't show eighty chairs. They're drawn grossly undersized and uh, you may want to consider redrawing this before you take it to city council. Based on the square footage, um, yeah, you will have thirty, thirty-five, forty people in there max, but I do count, and I missed the chairs at the garage door. So you have about ninety chairs in this place. So that's probably not a good idea. So uh, that's a lesson for everybody else not to hire an architect or that they should hire an architect. So anyway, that's my-
Not big office chairs, Marty. They're like stools.
Yeah, and they're about this big by scale.
They look like kindergarten-
I won't fit on them.
They type on a tiny little pad mat.
So anyway, I, I mean, that's, that's an obvious statement, but I didn't hear anybody say anything about it. So maybe it is so obvious we all missed it.
Fair enough, fair enough, from the architect. Would you like to restart your motion?
Motion is to recommend approval of SLU oh-one eighteen to city council.
With?
With bike racks.
Okay. Is there a second?
Support.
Support. Sorry. Mr. McLean, could you please call the roll?
Murad.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Shadle.
Yes.
Kepner.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Barnett.
Yes.
Here, go ahead, dude.
Kapilonsky.
Yes.
And Buckler.
Yes. All right. Thank you for coming. Okay, so we have item number two, which is a discussion, uh, capital improvement plan. It's a presentation and consideration of the city's capital improvement plan. Who is making, ah, we have a special surprise visitor.
Oh, surprise.
Strong word.
Surprise, I'm on the agenda.
Um, you're on the agenda. So, let's hear the highlights.
Not line by line? That's my favorite. Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just a couple of notes on the capital improvements plan. Uh, this is an item that is developed by department heads in conjunction with our finance department as well as my office. As uh, the state law mandates, this item actually comes before the planning commission who adopts this plan before sending it forward to our loc, to our city council for final approval. The items that are included in this get um, added to the, the eighteen nineteen, in this case fiscal year budget. So um, you'll see in that column, those items we intend to incorporate into the budget. But this is a long-term plan. This is one that looks forward at least five to six years. Uh, we try to very accurately anticipate our needs both on the capital improvement side as well as the equipment replacement side. You'll see it's actually broken out into two uh, separate listings and then further broken out by department. So going through these, uh, at least department by department, the capital improvements plan, not the C E R P, we'll get to that in just a moment. But we kick off with the recreation department. Um, off the top, you'll see that uh, each park is individually broken out and our planned improvements staggered throughout the course of this plan. That is in conjunction with the recreation five-year plan, um, that is put together by the advisory board. So we try to anticipate improvements for each one of those parks. I want to call your attention specifically to the uh, what's labeled as Oxford Open Space dash Merchants Park. You'll see that uh, the big ticket items on there are items that are slated to be co-funded with grant uh, funds that we have applied to, we've applied to the state for. We've actually put in two grant submittals approved by city council at a recent um, city council meeting. But um, we intend to basically completely overhaul the Merchant slash Oxford Park. Um, those are a combined park space from a couple of years ago. This, this monies indicate, um, like I said, not fully what'll be expended through the city's coffers, but will be supplemented by a match um, with the state grant as well. We have not received that state grant. Last year, we had a large debate and carried on to this, carried over into this year as to whether or not we show these items as an expenditure in the capital improvements plan. But um, it certainly adequately captures our intent there. We've uh, had a lot of discussions on this and we, we really want to move forward on the improvements for the um, Oxford slash Merchant Park. Uh, move next to Angel. Kind of moving down the slate here, you'll see that twenty-twenty-one, it's slated for some improvements. Same thing with the uh, Kiwanis Todd lot. Laysenby Field has, has some anticipated improvements coming in the nineteen-twenty fiscal year with some new netting, um, some much-needed drainage and um, some surface materials for the, for the ball fields as well. Oxford Towers is um, slated for some upgrades in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. And you'll see that there's uh, tennis courts replacements anticipated there. J C, our largest park, uh, has, has some anticipated improvements coming and also in the year twenty-twenty-one. Um, some of the highlights there, some of the largest ones include uh, play structuring, play structure, landscaping, as well as um, some bathroom facilities at that site. Community Park likewise is uh, has planned, planned improvements in uh, fiscal year nineteen-twenty. You'll see some items there include light poles, lights themselves, as well as the uh, poles for netting. Those unfamiliar with community parks, they're baseball fields, which is why the light poles are so important. The anticipated total, you'll see uh, for total for recreation, that line as it goes across there, it's remains fairly consistent for the next two years. Uh, some larger improvements associated with our largest park, J C, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. And then some other improvements in twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three. But um, those are less dollar amounts than what you've seen in the year previous as anticipated. Library is the next item. The library is um, uh, in, relatively speaking, it's been remodeled most recently, so it's considered basically our newest building. You'll see its anticipated uh, capital needs are much lower than many of the other departments. Plan improvements for eighteen-nineteen. There's uh, parking lot improvements and renovate and expand the storeroom. That's the total for the library. Uh, municipal, municipal building, uh, wayfinding signage gets slotted into this, but wayfinding signage will happen throughout the municipality. Uh, that is a project we're endeavoring upon in conjunction with the DDA. Uh, one of the items to note as far as the municipal building goes, where it's not showing any of the um, what we hope will be uh, improvements following a November election. Uh, but those aren't shown on there actually because that, again, that's uh, funds that have not been afforded by the voter. Um, and we wait till November to see if uh, that comes to fruition. DPW, uh, probably the largest single department on there. It reflects several different funds. You'll notice uh, in the funding source area, this includes general fund contributions, uh, what we call enterprise funds, which is our water and sewer accounts, as well as road, Act fifty-one, which is our local and uh, major road funding. So it's a culmination of five different funding sources. The largest one that probably jumps out at you immediately is a water main project. This is a water main looping project on Coolidge. This is a, it helps ensure um, it's a, there's benefits to pressure and water quality uh, included in this project. That's gonna exist on Coolidge. I know with a twelve. Um, infrastructure improvements um, are more really, on this one, they fall into like a maintenance schedule. So concrete patches throughout the city, um, spray patch, crack sealing and overbanding. Uh, those are three different items. Spray patch, uh, those that are familiar with it are, basically it's, it's a step up from our coal patch. Coal patch is very much a temporary spot. Um, spray patch lasts longer. It um, is a little bit more reliable and it's a longer-term fix, but certainly isn't a solution for our road issues. Crack sealing is exactly what it sounds. It's a tar emulsion, goes into areas where uh, pavement's separated in order to create uh, uh, remove any gaps that will allow water to come in. And overbanding is for some of our newer roads. We go in and literally put a, a band throughout that helps add a couple of extra years of life to, to the road surface. Moving down sidewalk ramps, um, those are familiar with our, our sidewalk network. You'll know that in many cases, we don't have the appropriate ADA compliant sidewalk ramps. There's a, we continue to invest in there and a lot of those, a lot of those improvements are funded through CDBG, which is our community development block grant, which is a federal Moving down sewer main line relining, uh, those are familiar with our cure and place pipe program. We've got about twenty-eight percent of the city relined. Uh, this is a structural pipelining. Um, uh, we, we found a lot of success with it. Uh, it definitely adds a lot of strength and it's basically like putting a whole new pipe uh, in the ground without actually having to dig up and disturb the gr- at grade surface. You'll see that uh, in this year, we're looking at about three hundred thousand, which has been consistent with our program. We are looking to increase the investment we make into that uh, system. So you'll see it in the matter of a couple of years, it moves three-fifty to three-fifty, to four, to four, to four. And so it's uh, we, we are happy to be increasing our investment in our um, sewer system. Likewise, we've committed to increasing investment in our um, sewer system through the um, saw program we went through. We cleaned and the entirety of our system. We televised the entirety of our system. And we've uh, noticed areas where um, in order to fend off possible issues later on, we're gonna go ahead and do some preemptive uh, pipe replacements there. So that is different than the cure and place pipe. Uh, let's see. Sidewalks have been a, a big topic of conversation as of late. Uh, we do have monies slated for a sidewalk replacement program. The, that process is gonna start probably in the, this, uh, after July one. City council at their last meeting approved a um, approved a pilot program uh, with uh, HRC, Huberoff and Clark, the city's engineers. They'll be going through and auditing the condition of sidewalks in a specific area and then using that to build out a sidewalk replacement program over the next couple of years. So this is, those with long roots in the community know we did a, a program similar to this about ten to fifteen years ago, or excuse, about fifteen years ago. So we are maintaining an appropriate schedule for replacing that. Certainly there are sidewalks that could use replacements um, immediately and we've been trying to do that on a case-by-case basis, but this is certainly taking a more holistic and network-wide approach to that, to those improvements. Um, next up, I'm gonna, a couple of lines down. I want to really note this one. Um, twelve mile, uh, twelve mile resurfacing is a project we're taking on in conjunction with uh, road commission of Oakland County. So that's about three hundred thousand dollar project that will actually yield from Greenfield all the way to Coolidge, new road surface. So, um, I know, a lot of us are gonna be pretty excited about getting new road surface in place there.
What is the ca- what is the county's uh, contribution to that?
It's a tri-parties grant. So there's actually a third of it comes from us, third of it comes from uh, road commission, and a third of it comes from either state or federal allocations.
Very good.
Um, let's see, the, a lot of the other ones are just kind of keeping up with um, with issues. Um, you'll notice, yeah, so um, gonna make some upgrades to our HVAC, our HVAC in the um, front office facility over at, at DPW. Um, some improvements to a salt dome. We're gonna try to replace that facility. If those that are familiar with the two thousand fourteen uh, study on the city's facilities, it indicated the salt dome was, was needing replacement. Um, so we're, we're excited to get that project done. We actually house and have partnerships with City of Huntington Woods as well as Berkeley School. So it's not just our salt dome, it's salt dome shared by many other parties. So we have a lot of people, a lot of people relying on us for that item. Um, the total for public works, you'll see, remains fairly consistent throughout the next couple of years as we uh, continue to try to address um, infrastructure issues and um, or that's water, sewer, road surface. Uh, much with the municipal, uh, municipal buildings section. This does not indicate or make any presumption about uh, the way the vote will go in November. If obviously if successful, uh, the next year's capital improvements plan will reflect the, the voters' wishes on that. Public safety, the, um, you'll see some upgrades of the facilities throughout. It's our biggest ticket item specific to public safety. You'll actually see reflected in the capital, uh, the equipment replacement program. But uh, one of the things I want to call your attention to is in the eighteen-nineteen budget year, we anticipate a fire hall extension. We're upgrade, we're hoping to upgrade our, our ladder truck. It's gonna be a longer truck. Um, so we'll be bumping out the front of the, the fire hall to accommodate that, that truck and then provide a little bit more space for um, our officers to, to work within that facility there. So that's um, two, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then the year after, we're making some upgrades to our dispatch area, hopefully to accommodate um, some, a better workflow, some better equipment and so make some upgrades there that keeps that a productive facility long into the future. Then the downtown development authority, you'll see some items indicated there. Coolidge lighting, uh, streetscaping and again, let's say, working with us on the wayfinding portions. They're gonna cover all the wayfinding upgrades that fall within their district. In total, you're looking in, in the next budget year, um, just shy of three million dollars worth of capital investment within our community. And that number stays fairly consistent throughout um, until fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. You see a slight drop and then it falls off in twenty-two, twenty-three to about just over two million. As always, um, there's a long way out, needs change. Certainly as we get closer to, to those years, we will likely have items that will need to be addressed um, coming up. But this is uh, based on the, the feedback we've gotten from our departments, um, the, based on the best information we have, a, I think a positive way to address capital improvements. Um, any questions specific to that portion before moving to replace, placement?
I got one. When I looked at it today, I printed this out and I looked at it and I saw the wayfinding was seventy-five thousand for city hall. And then I went down the road and I find another forty thousand in the DDA thing.
Yeah.
Is that, is that consistent that we're spending that amount of money on wayfinding for the entire city?
Yes, yes. So the wayfinding portion is, is anticipated to be consistent throughout the whole community. Um, there's actually was a, um, the, the plan is, we have it laid out now, has, actually shows individual possible locations where these signs could be installed throughout the entire community. Um, and the proportional split between the city's general fund and the DDA is reflective of what signs are going to go within the DDA's district and which ones are gonna go without. So we just simply have a lot more space outside the district than we do have within it.
So the, so the DDA's is really for the downtown area specifically?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Michelle.
Just one quick question on the um, the funding for the sidewalk replacement program. Where's that coming from?
The, let's see, the engineering portions of it are gonna be um, put forth by the city's general fund. When we actually get to the construction phase of it, that's a um, that's a special assessment district. So that'd be, the items uh, replaced actual in front of the household will be uh, placed on the tax rolls for that individual house homeowner. And then, you know, we're still working on a phasing plan, but essentially it's like a zero percent, three-year payoff.
Thank you. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you for building restroom facilities at Merchants Park.
Okay.
Um, I, I noticed that um, you have lane items for um, road patching. I noticed that you have lane items for road patching, road repairs. I didn't see any, any line item for road resurfacings other than the 12-mile. And I also note that you have an item for planning citywide road and water main improvements. $12,000 in the upcoming year and then zero after that. Do I conclude from this that you're going to have to rely on the village to fund anything like what I'm talking about here, road resurfacings, as opposed to just patching and maintaining in the future?
Yes, with our current resources, patching and maintaining would be the extent of what we'd be able to do in the, in the scope of this plan. We would be, essentially be working on the same system that got us to the Harvard Road project where over the course of, just over a decade actually, we ended up saving up enough money, building up enough fund balance to endeavor upon a full replacement for a whole half mile of street. So you're correct on saying that, yes, under current resources, we would be in, just in patching and maintaining mode and not doing any full-on resurfacing.
Okay. Just one other minor thing. I, I trust that in, you have lighting improvements at the parks on a staggered basis. I, I assume that you're going to go with energy efficient lighting, LED lights and so on in the course of making those improvements?
Absolutely. It benefits, the benefits are absolutely outstanding from just, from an operation standpoint, from a longevity standpoint. It's nothing but benefits there for the efficiency lighting.
One other question if I may. There's been a linear park north of 12, between 12 and Webster on Coolidge, on each of the capital improvement plans that we've looked at over the past few years. Can you describe the concept there?
It was indicated in our, it was discussed in our five-year rec plan. It's, and like you said, it does show up each year. The needs in our existing established parks always seem to rank higher in our priority list. But essentially the discussion has been for public space where there's a substantial green belt there now and there'd be amenities for residents and that becomes like an area for conjugation.
When would we know that the planning has actually commenced for that? What green light would we get?
It would, you would see it begin to be reflected in this document before, before anything else. So this is, this is our planning bible as far as all adding resources.
Okay, well, I encourage that if we do get to the verge of planning that we, we look very carefully at things like native plants as cover and along with other green and sustainable amenities for that, that facility.
It's a great thought. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions on CIP portion?
Mr. Richardson stole my thunder about the roads.
All right, okay. Would you like to go on to the capital equipment replacement plan, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This one starts out with Public Works. Some of the larger ticket items upcoming, anticipated for this budget year. A dump truck with a plow spreader, replacing a vehicle from purchase in 1997. What we've gone to is, we've gone to the type of truck that has essentially replaceable bed parts. And so the, we just bought it, we bought our first one this year. Essentially you've got the truck like you would anticipate, but the back actually is built so that different functions can be taken off and put back on. And so if you need a plow spread, if you need a spreader, there's actually an attachment that goes on the back of that and it becomes a salt truck. If you need a flat bed, if you need a dump bed, whatever it is, take it off, put the new one back on. And what this is going to do, this is going to set us on the path eventually to not needing to purchase so many dump trucks, but actually allow some greater functionality with, with a single vehicle. So it's basically, it becomes a much more of a multipurpose vehicle. The one that we bought this year is, is working out really well and we look forward to this becoming our new replacement schedule. It's one of our larger ones. As you can see, we're replacing a lot of vehicles. I will call your attention to the years on a lot of these vehicles. Some of them are able to vote at this point. So we're certainly not, certainly not being abrupt in our replacement by any means. Still, we're looking at replacing the garbage truck loader too. We don't actually, as you many know, we don't actually pick up garbage, but these things are crucial to our leaf collection program, for those asking. Like I say, truck hoists, replacement parts. You'll see a lot of it is, certainly not a lot of new purchases, but as you would imagine, there are replacement plans. Any plans on this item? I know probably there's not a lot of want to go truck by truck on the DPW.
Please do.
Marty.
All right. Actually, one thing I do want to call attention to, right at the end of the total for Public Works, you'll see the radio, radio read meter improvements. For those not familiar now, you actually have somebody that comes to your home with a little device that attaches to a touchpad where it takes your reading at the, at the home now. We are trying to go to a radio read. We're successful in doing so in the commercial areas. It's actually a radio frequency that broadcasts a signal when it's met upon the receiver. It actually downloads the read right there. So what is now a many-day process actually can become just a matter of hours. And we've been, again, like I said, very successful in the commercial areas. That's, has cut the time that we invest in this way, way down. It cuts the amount of manpower we invest in this way down. And so we're excited about this becoming a residential program too. So you'll see there's investments slated for there over the next several years. Library, printers, alarm systems. Let's say another, a lot of pretty low items. Same thing with municipal building, copy machines. We're looking at, looking at City Hall security improvements as well in fiscal year 1920. Certainly, again, like I say, going back to our discussions about November, that could certainly change depending on the will of the voters in November. City Clerk's Office, you'll see there's some improvements slated for voting booths, laptops, equipments tied to elections. Parks and Rec doesn't have a lot of equipment replacement per se. There's mostly capital needs. Public Safety brings us to the largest item on the, on the documents here and that is the purchase of a new fire ladder truck. Our current one is, I don't remember the distance, the ladder distance, but we're looking at between 105 and 107 foot ladder. This will allow us to stage from the street and reach all the way into the roof of a residential home, something we're not able to do now. Fire practices and the way that you stage, your approach to firefighting is changing. They don't like to put near as many people on the roof as they used to. You can imagine why. So thankfully, with this new truck, there'd be a platform on the front is what we're looking at and a firefighter will be able to actually remain safe on a platform, fight the, fight the fire, get it put out. Not only a benefit to us, but any of our automatic mutual aid partners as well. So excited about this purchase. Our current fire truck is ending the end of its planned useful life. You don't want to go a whole lot longer than what we've gone now and still retain some value with this truck. So whether, whether we keep it on as a, as a relief vehicle, as a second vehicle, or we look at maybe selling this off or, you know, there are strategic partnerships where training facilities also are interested in, in older trucks for, for training purposes. But certainly excited about the prospect of a new truck. Continue to stay up to date on replacement of our patrol vehicles as well. And then this, you know, upgrades to a recording system for interviews. We utilize this in the course of regular policing and investigation. So you see that Public Safety certainly looks like the largest number in 1819 and then it, it moves down into our sort of more regular replacement schedule. No items slated for cable upgrades. And then computers and software, you see our, it's just that. It's replacement to computers and operating devices that we utilize throughout the entire office. So in total, this year, again, like I said, larger than what we typically see, larger than what we anticipate seeing for the next few years, but that is driven almost solely by the purchase of the fire ladder truck this year. So any questions on this item?
Any questions? No questions. So...
So we have to make a motion to recommend the council?
Yes, the Planning Commission adopts those documents and sends it along to the Planning Commission for...
I'll make a motion to approve, to recommend the council approval of this.
It's a dual adoption required. So this, this body will adopt it and the Planning Commission, or the City Council will adopt it as well.
Make a motion to...
Motion to approve? Adopt. The capital will outweigh for 2017, '18.
I'll support it.
Call the roll, Mr. McLean?
Richardson, yes. Shadle?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kapilansky?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Hered?
Yes.
And Buckler?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Buckler.
Thank you. May shamelessly plug?
Sure.
Okay.
Shamelessly plug away.
The, the upcoming City Council workshops on the budget, the fiscal year 1819 budget are coming up on the 14th and 15th. Those are, those are, we have three dates scheduled, so it could go over in the 16th. But certainly we invite everyone to, to attend the 14th and the, the May 14th and the May 15th budget work sessions with City Council. Those will be right over in the Public Safety Building. Thank you for the plug.
Thank you.
Plug is done.
Madam Chair, I, I believe the maker of the motion stated, adopt the 17, '18 budget. Should be 18, '19.
18, '19, sorry.
Record should reflect.
Record should reflect it.
Yes, thank you for catching that.
Thank you all.
All right, so we go to the last item on our agenda. Discussion, planning consultant observations and subjected, suggested changes to the proposed La Sallette project by Carlisle Wartman. And we have Mr. Carlisle present, I believe. So I'd like to say a little bit of word before Mr. Carlisle approaches the podium that the city entered into an agreement with Carlisle Wartman as, as an advisor to the city on this matter. They undertook the task of reviewing what had been presented to date in context with the ordinances and regulatory structures of the City of Berkeley. They made some recommendations to the city and, and then sat down with the applicant to talk about some of their concerns and laid out, you know, some of, to hear what the applicant might or might not be willing to change. So what we were prepared, what we were provided with was a memo from Carlisle Wartman. So this will be the first time that the Planning Commission is hearing their comments directly. So we kind of, we will hear from Mr. Carlisle. We may ask him some questions back and forth from the council. We will open the floor for comments. This is not a dialogue though, at that point. We'll take comments from the public, four minutes apiece. And, and that's really it. We have no motions to make on this. There's nothing being decided on this. And the applicants that are present, or any representatives of the applicant, are no different than members of the audience. So again, we're not entering into dialogue back and forth. And if you do come up to speak, you have the same time limitations that anybody else has except for Mr. Carlisle as a resource for the city. So, Mr. Carlisle, would you like to approach the podium and tell us, kind of explain your methodology and tell us what your, your overall findings are? And remember that, so the camera needs to be able to pick it up and/or, you know, follow. So I don't have any, I don't have a magic voice in my head that tells me what the camera can and cannot see. But, so we may want to be able to, for right now, kind of keep it on the side, but if anybody...
Well, good evening, everyone. I am Dick Carlisle, President of Carlisle Wartman Associates. By the way, we have done some work for Berkeley in the fact that we assisted on the Recreation Master Plan, as a matter of fact. Just as a way of background, of course, we are, our main offices are in Ann Arbor. We also have an office in Troy. We represent a lot of different kinds of communities around southeastern Michigan, approximately 80. So you can imagine that we see just about any and every kind of situation. And over my 40-year career, I think I have seen every, virtually every kind of situation. It's kind of like the farmer's insurance commercial, isn't it, you know? But anyway, obviously we've, we've had the opportunity to review many large-scale projects, PUDs of that nature, infill projects, you know, high-rise buildings. We do quite a bit of work for the City of Ann Arbor today. Have actually reviewed, from a building plan review, every large-scale commercial building that you now see being built in Ann Arbor. Worked with Royal Oak, worked with Troy, worked with a variety of communities through their changes of, that have occurred. So these are the kinds of experiences I bring to you in terms of where I, how I viewed this particular project. Spent a lot of time doing some due diligence on this, reading council, excuse me, commission minutes pretty extensively because they went back a little ways. And obviously did site visits. Spent quite a bit of time speaking about this project with both Tim, your city manager, and your city attorney, John Staren, who I've actually known for quite a few years and worked in quite a few situations with John also. But I wanted to try to boil my, my observations of this project based on what I read in the minutes, down to about three major issues. And I know there's, I know that there's more. But these were the things that I felt were the most substantive. And rather than put these in a report that was all encompassing in the review of the project, I thought it was fair to share these with you in advance and also with the applicant as reflective as to what my observations about the project are now and would be if the project remains as it is. So these three things really boil down to parking, the mass, the scale and the height of the building and, and the sort of the usability or the open space of the project. These are three major defining issues, as I see it. And of course, what you see before you hear is the project as it's been currently proposed. To some degree, a lot of the design elements of this project are being driven by the amount of parking that, that is being provided for the project. So currently, the project that is being proposed is, is being, is attempting to meet the city's requirements of two point, or two spaces per unit, which would then require 268 spaces. That means it's 182 onsite and 84 that are shared with the church next door. There would also be a potential additional 16 spaces, I believe, that could be land banked for the future. In my, you know, in my experience with projects like this, there are really several different factors that, that do really influence parking. One, it's the unit mix. Two, it's the targeted age of the residents that live there. And it's the, and third, it's the availability of alternative transportation. I think it was interesting tonight to hear the discussion about the shared office, about the desire of some of the tenants in that particular space to want to ride, you know, their bikes to, to work from that standpoint. And that's kind of what I mean. That in some degree, you know, age, the, the age of the tenants and where they are in their particular lifestyle might influence the type of transportation they work. So as the project is currently proposed, it is overwhelmingly studio and one-bedroom apartments, which over 80% of the units are these tip, are these types of units, which again, in our experience, generally demand less parking. Certainly, the more, the greater number of bedrooms, the greater that the, the tenant, the targeted tenant might be families, especially with multiple drivers, certainly is going to change your parking mix. But that's really not what this project seems to represent. I do think it's probably accurate that a project of this nature will primarily attract younger professional tenants, as well as certain empty nesters. But predominantly, probably in somewhat of the larger, at least the one-bedroom, if not the two-bedroom units from that standpoint. And, you know, this type of tenant mix really has a different characteristic in, in car ownership patterns than, you know, the, the family formation age that I think many of us are all familiar with, with two cars and two kids and four, or two, two... with two cars and two kids and four, or two, you know, actually sometimes four cars when you have young drivers and things of that nature. But really, the demographics of young professionals and empty nesters are really, I mean, I do a lot of writing and speaking about this subject and really those, the characteristics are coalescing, you know, in a very interesting fashion in the fact that they lead similar lifestyles as well as have the similar desires. Some communities in your area have updated their parking requirements. In fact, we've helped a number of them. Ferndale, for example, requires, I think, one and a half spaces per dwelling unit. Some other communities base the parking on the type of unit. So in efficiency, would require less number of parking spaces, for example, than, for example, a one or two-bedroom apartment. Another thing that influences the amount of parking is the availability of alternative transportation. We know it's not as fully developed as many think it will be or should be. But this is on a smart bus system. And again, younger professionals statistically, as well as to a certain degree, some empty nesters, will have a greater tendency to use things like smart, you know, the smart buses or Uber or Lyft or things of that, thereby reducing their need to have more than one car at that time, or any automobiles, for that matter. One of the things that we, when we are asked to do evaluations of parking, and particularly in relationships to the project, I really rely upon empirical data that is published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, who do publish a parking generation manual. And you have to be careful when you use that manual because you want to make sure that when you use it, that you're, for the particular land use, that there's enough representative studies to make that particular evaluation legitimate. And for the most part, the ITE is the authoritative go-to source for both, you know, trip generation and parking generation studies. In this particular case, their studies are pretty reliable because I think they've conducted over 44 studies on the need for parking of apartment projects with similar characteristics to this particular one. And their studies indicate that an average of 1.4 parking spaces are needed for each unit. So based on the ITE data, that would constitute the need for about 188 parking spaces. Given the particular characteristics in terms of how this project ends up being developed, you have some flexibility in that regard in terms of whether you require all the parking or you permit shared parking, or whether you do allow to, you know, some of the parking to be relaxed. But generally, I will say that the studies indicate that two parking spaces per unit generally is not a standard that is being, it's becoming less common standard today in most, in, you know, when these things are considered in a more fine-tuned manner based on the type of unit mix that you have. The other, the other big question, and this really kind of feeds into the parking question, is the issue of building mass and height. And some of the things that I noticed about the project and I read, you know, in my minutes, the minutes that you, a discussion, were things that the building massing and the height was partly due to a number of different factors. One, it was building height, it was the proximity to Coolidge and Oxford in terms of where the building was positioned, meaning the location on the corner. And it was a design approach that really obscured the most visible open space on the project. So, and I think the final thing is, especially when you're in a community that is attempting to promote walkability, the one particular feature of this project that I thought really discouraged walkability was the front turnaround right off of Coolidge, and I'll have some more comments about that. That, but when you have parking as a ground floor use, that, you know, generally now you have an inactive use on the ground floor and really the goal to really promote, you know, a walkable, viable community from the standpoint of visibility of the ground floor is to really have visible use of the ground floor other than parking. So for example, I mean, you would not, you know, if you were in a traditional downtown, for example, you would not want to see parking on the ground floor because it would really destroy the visibility of the ground floor use from any types of walkable environment that surrounds it. So I looked at it from that standpoint, that the inactive use really exacerbated the problem of the appearance and the visibility and the massing of the building. So there are a number of alternatives that I observed and I discussed with city staff prior to meeting with the applicant that would really help reduce the mass and scale of this building. One was to scale the building back from the corner. In other words, if you actually just moved it back from the corner so that you would actually not obscure the view of a central courtyard area in front of the building along Coolidge. A second alternative would be to lower either all or a portion of the building completely. Again, that would be, require the elimination of either all or a part of the parking podium that currently is now the most, you know, the most dominant use on the ground floor. And that would really accomplish a couple of different things. I mean, one, it would lower the height of the building, and two, it would create, it would allow then for the ground floor use to be a more active use, whether it's a living environment or whether it's some other type of use on the ground floor that would actually, you know, provide an active use of the ground floor space, particularly one that would be more interesting to not only the folks that live there, but to the passersby also. And the third thing was really to activate some type of street-level use. This parking podium creates, you know, a couple of wings on the front part of the building that even if a part of the podium were to remain, those could be converted to some kind of active use. Probably, you know, some type of retail use would probably be the most desirable. But if that market was not there, there are a lot of internal, there's a number of uses that are internal in this building that are in small spaces that I looked at on the floor plans as being perhaps not as usable or as desirable from a tenant standpoint. Whereas if they were to be consolidated into larger spaces and located on the ground floor, you'd really kill several birds with one stone. One, you'd have much larger, more usable, active community spaces. And then, two, you'd be able to, you could locate those on the ground floor so that then you solve this problem of inactive use of the ground floor. So in a minute, I'll show you an alternative that was considered, that is being, that is considered, that uses that particular, that particular alternative. The other thing that I looked at was, I understand the thinking behind the townhouses on Oxford. But one of the observations I did make is that, you know, seven-unit small projects are a bit problematic. I understand what the thinking was behind that. Obviously, for many years, the residents along that street have been looking at an unimproved parking lot. But what if that was actually an improved parking lot with a pretty substantial buffer there? And if there were to be parking eliminated underneath the podium, that would be a logical place to be able to place it if the commission felt that additional parking was needed. That would certainly come with a significant buffer and a significant improved image as you look into that particular site. And then the final observation was about open space. And I really felt that the open space that was being provided is really, is not going to be of the usefulness or benefit that I think might have been hoped for. The real key space is really, you know, is, could be in a central courtyard that was much larger and much more visible, not hidden, you know, not completely hidden by that wing of the building. And actually something that would be, I think, a lot more visible, a lot more visible and a lot more attractive. And in my opinion, the most, the more, the greater opportunity is where the current turnaround now sets. Because now what you're going to see from, what you would see from Coolidge is really pretty dominated by that turnaround, which I don't think is a good idea from Coolidge because of adding two more curb cuts, adding more turning movements on Coolidge. But also, I mean, think about what that's going to do to the walkability there. We have two more driveways to pass through there. And now consider what that would really be in terms, if that were larger and a much more impressive, oppressive, open space area that was a really beautiful view into the building. So what that recommendation really led to was a thought that actually the building should be flipped from that standpoint. So Mr. McLean and I did meet with the applicant after I shared these thoughts with the city manager and Mr. McLean in indicating that if I were asked by the commission what my recommendations would be, this is what they would be. I felt that it was fair to gauge the reaction from the applicant because there might be some things that I didn't know or I wasn't aware of because I haven't been involved in this project very long. And the response that we got, both in meeting and then as a follow-up, was very positive from that standpoint in the fact that there were certain, and I didn't, and I would say this to the commission, I don't believe all these ideas are mutually exclusive. In other words, you know, you don't do one, or you don't have to do just one or just the other. There can be various elements that could be chosen. And that's somewhat what has been presented back in a concept view from the developer. So the first alternative that we received was a retaining of, retaining the podium, but again, flipping the building so that the drop-off is in the rear, which in my opinion is a much more logical place for it because that's where all the traffic's going to be anyway. Have the, you know, have the main entry from the parking area and from the drop-off in the rear of the building. But I felt that these two wings of the parking podium were not particularly usable parking anyway. They're dead-end parking. There's going to be difficult for, you know, living in Ann Arbor, I park in a lot of, you know, parking structures and I know how difficult some of the spaces are to get into and out of. And so consequently, I felt that these were not particularly usable parking areas for this particular, you know, in this particular configuration. And so what the applicant has shown here and proposed to do is actually create two of their community spaces in that, you know, convert that area, that ground floor space into community spaces. This will be sort of a internal office, working space for residents only with maybe conference so that those who, you know, work out of their homes will have actually, or students or whatever will actually have work and study space in that particular wing of the building. And this will be, this would be obviously very visible, a very visible structure, visible particular end of the building from the street view and actually would bring some life to the building rather than just parking. On the other, on the south side of the building, again, I observed that in their floor plans, you know, we have a couple of small exercise rooms, which I felt were not going to be very friendly and not really be used all that much. I don't know if you've ever gone to, you know, some hotels that have these little, you know, these little crappy workout rooms that are not very inviting to go to and you don't feel very comfortable being in there because there's no windows or anything else. Well, that's what some of those things would be like, except there would be windows. Anyway, what they did is take the recommendation I made in my, in my report and actually turned this into one large workout exercise space, but actually provide a connection to the community plaza so people would have the opportunity, who lived here, to actually, you know, have a pleasant outdoor experience in conjunction with, you know, their workout experience. So it actually creates some real use and benefit of this particular community plaza. What this also does is really create an impressive landscape plaza out in front of the building, which in my view is much more important to have that kind of view than this particular small piece of open space here because this green space, looking into the building, will look like a true urban-type plaza where, which will be a lot of greenery and be a very pleasant environment, not just to look at when you drive by, but to be able to enter the building if you're a resident or as you're a neighbor or you're walking by it, it'll be a pretty pleasant environment in that particular regard. This particular plan does continue, does keep the townhouse units. And so consequently, you know, it would still rely, it will rely on the shared parking concept. And frankly, any alternative could still rely on the shared parking concept. The second alternative is the more dramatic of the two. Oops, because it falls off the, you know, the easel. And that is a complete elimination of the parking podium. That lowers the building height by one floor. It does, you know, does continue to flip the building. You're going to have all the features of the front, you know, the visibility of the front with active uses on the ground floor, the large plaza area in the front, the same type of building use in both wings of the building so that, again, you have an active uses of those two wings of the building. But it does eliminate the townhouses and expands surface parking. But one of the other things it does is it eliminates this curb-cut location, which I also felt, you know, further intruded in the neighborhood from that standpoint. And so these were basically, I mean, I think it was a, it was a pretty fair reflection of some discussion that we had and provides the commission with some contrasting alternatives to what you have been proposed with so far. And it would be my observations, if the project is proposed as it is, these would be my observations of things that would improve the project. And so I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. Questions from the commissioners?
Okay, go for it.
One of the things that has bothered me about the building as it is sited right now is the relationship of Oxford Road, the building to Oxford Road, and the closeness of that building sitting along that particular street. Especially with the high-rise building, whatever the heights it was, I think, in the 40-some foot height. Do you see that, has that building moved in any way or form given us? I've never been able to get a dimension from anybody as to what the dimension is between the building and the sidewalk on Oxford. Nobody's ever been able to tell me that.
The footprint of the building is the same as the project that you have seen.
Okay.
Yeah. And what that, and what that dimension is, I'm not certain, Mr. Barnett.
Yeah, I have no idea. I haven't been able to ever get one. I've been told it's something less than what the existing building is face of the existing church building at that corner, but I don't know the answer.
Well, let me also make an observation. Part of that, in my opinion, is exacerbated by the fact that you would have ground floor parking. You know, I think when you have more of an active use on the ground floor, it tends to, I mean, parking is not, I mean, a parking podium is not, I mean, it may be supportive of a residential use. But in my opinion, having the actual residential use or some other active use on the ground floor is really going to, that would help alleviate some of that, some of that problem. Obviously, dropping the building, dropping the building one story would also help.
That, to me, is...
That would help a lot, too.
Yeah, that would help me a lot.
But the commission, for that to happen, would have to make some decisions about whether the townhouses remain or not.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rowan, you had a question?
Yeah, that was one of my questions, again. And as we last looked at this, one of the things that I started thinking is, one of the things that would help with the mass is if the top floor was pulled back five feet or so from the facade so that it kind of stepped back at a higher level. And I, you know, I know that reduces the size and possibly the number of units in the building. But it was just something that I had thought of, that it was, would be a good way to reduce the scale some, so.
That's not an uncommon...
Get the lowering of the building?
Yeah, that's not an uncommon technique either, of course.
Yeah.
Comments?
Nope, that was it.
Questions for Mr. Carlisle?
Yeah, I had a question. So you talked about with elimination of the townhouses, which I like, providing a significant landscape buffer there. So it's a little bit hard to see from here, but what is proposed in terms of... but what is proposed in terms of...
Well, you know, none of this is detailed at this point.
Right.
But it would, you know, I mean, it can involve some space, additional space here. Some of these parking spaces may have to be adjusted slightly, in my opinion, you know. You can go with eighteen-foot spaces and not have a problem. If you have twenty-foot spaces, you know, predominantly throughout there, get a little bit more space here, do a nice screening wall and get as much landscaping between that screening wall. Because right now, I mean, it's a chain-linked fence that's in pretty bad shape.
Right.
So, you could get a very, I think you could get a very extant, substantial... How do you combine the word extensive and substantial and make it one word?
Substantial, okay.
A very substantial...
Existential.
You could get a very substantial screen along there, along with a screening wall and would pretty much hide that parking lot. Plus, this curb cut would be eliminated, which I think would be a real positive.
And the parking that's proposed as part of that plan right now, do you happen to know? I was trying to do some calculations here, but I couldn't figure it out. What the parking ratio would be with the...
It's a hundred and sixty, it's, I believe that this plan provides...
It's in there. Hundred and sixty-one?
Hundred and sixty spaces, I believe. But both, in both cases, the shared parking option is still on the table.
And the hundred and sixty-one would not include the shared parking that was...
That does not include the shared parking. The shared parking is still available. Yeah, that's, that's a hundred and sixty surface spaces on site.
Do you know offhand how many units? I'm just trying to figure out if that...
Hundred and thirty-four.
So, it'd be close to that one point five-ish?
Yes.
With the shared parking?
That's, well, actually, I think it could actually be up to two with the shared parking, depending on what the shared parking arrangement, you know, the agreement was all about.
Okay.
I mean...
Okay, that was my only questions for now.
Marty?
By eliminating the townhouses, I take it the unit count hasn't changed? Those units are going into the big building? Are we reducing the number of dwelling units?
No, the total number of units in the main building stays the same, so it doesn't, it doesn't increase...
We've lost, we're dropping six or seven or eight units.
Seven units, that's right.
Okay, because that wasn't on the table before.
Yeah.
And that's intriguing.
Yeah.
We do have a technical issue, though. Part of our PUD, one of the items is provide a variety of housing. And we've gone back and forth with that for months and months and months. And that's kind of why the townhouses, the unfortunate, you know, townhouses are really there. And I don't think a variety of one, studio, one and two-bedroom units comply for a variety of housing types. So, in your vast wisdom, this is all part of a PUD. Well, that's one of our requirements and how does that come into play? And if you don't have an answer, that's fine.
Well, I think I do have an answer. I mean, I would say that simply providing housing to meet a PUD requirement, that, I mean, it may be viable. I didn't think it was done, you know, it turned out the best way that it could, frankly, to me is simply to meet a requirement is not a wise thing to do, okay? So, if there could be maybe some variation of the housing internally, and I do think that the applicant's possibly thinking of something of that, it may not be seven units, but it might provide even a greater, might meet that requirement. I think that would be, I mean, if you were asking my recommendation, I would advise you that would be a better alternative than providing a seven-unit townhouse that in the long term, those associated owners are going to regret that they belong to a seven-unit townhouse.
And I'd like to comment on that, Marty. The variety of housing types is one of seven and they have to meet three of the seven.
I understand that.
Oh, okay.
I understand that. But that was part of the, that was one of the items that we relied on and that had been expressed. Now, I look at a bigger picture as a variety of housing in the whole of Berkeley and obviously, this complies with that. But that's not how the PUD, I think, reads. And to me, it's a technicality and I agree that it's... To shoot a project down or, you know, or to deny a project, is the correct term, or to accept some townhouses that really none of us liked just to satisfy a line item is not really the wisest choice. And that's why I said I look at it as the totality of housing stock in Berkeley.
Okay.
But, again, that's not how it reads.
Okay, well, and there's six other bites at the apple for that particular element.
Absolutely. So, right now, those are my only comments.
Okay, I know, Mr. Mark.
She was...
Lisa, go ahead.
My comment is about the shared parking. So, I was looking over our ordinance for that and I don't know if you have the answer, but while we're allowed flexibility on the PUD side, the church does not have that same luxury. They have to follow the ordinances. And in order to follow that, we have to have the sum total of both uses in order for the church to participate in the shared parking agreement. There's not enough parking to fulfill that, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure how we go forward talking about a shared parking agreement when the parking need for the church is so great. In total, if you include the activity building and the office and what the church currently needs, you're looking at the church portion of that sum as four hundred and one parking spaces plus whatever we decide the PUD needs. So, while we on the PUD side can say that's cool, on the church side, they have to follow the ordinances because they are a separate entity. They don't allow that flexibility.
I don't know, is there a concern at use?
I'm not sure about that.
Go ahead, I don't, I don't, we'll have to, we'll have to look at that because I think, because they're an existing, they're not asking to build a new church at the same time.
No, but interestingly enough, on all of the prior information in the packets, they always left out part B of that ordinance, which reads, "Effective with the date of this chapter, off-street parking existing in connection with the operation of an existing building or use shall not be reduced to an amount less than here and after required for a similar new building or new use."
You know, if I could just make a comment about that, you know, there's probably some revision of the existing parking there that would actually result in more parking. As it currently is laid out, there is probably, I mean, as I've looked at it, there's probably ways to actually increase the amount of parking on the church site then from what it, what it currently is. And, I mean, I think if that's, I mean, listen, this is, this is going to be the sixty-four thousand dollar question of the commission as to whether that much shared parking is really needed. I mean, in other words, do you really need to provide two spaces for, two spaces for a studio apartment? I mean, that's really the large question. Or two spaces for each one-bedroom apartment? I, I would say that with a hundred and thirty-four units, eighty percent of which are studio and one-bedroom, a hundred and sixty surface parking spaces will probably satisfy most of the need. And then you will still have the added benefit of having the overflow being in shared parking that could ultimately be, that could possibly be rearranged and even increased in terms of parking. I think that's the real question that the commission will need to struggle with. There's, there's probably even more empirical data that I can, that I have, that I can provide to you to indicate that I'm pretty confident that the Institute of Transportation Engineers' studies are pretty accurate, okay? But I understand what some of the, I, believe me, I do understand what some of the concerns are, particularly on the neighborhoods. I heard the discussion here earlier tonight, what, and I know about some of the other issues in Berkeley. And so, you certainly need to be satisfied that a hundred and sixty spaces plus X number of shared parking spaces are going to satisfy most of the parking requirements.
Mr. Rogers, any comments?
Yeah. First of all, as far as mixed housing, I was thinking about Commissioner Merad's comment about stepped facade and just began to wonder if the top floor of the proposed building could be condos instead of small apartments, maybe, or a portion?
Larger units.
Or larger units? Yeah, or larger units.
Keep the chatter to...
I certainly, I think there could be some variation in the units. I'm not going to speak, I mean, this obviously...
I'm not insisting on anything, I'm just wondering.
I mean, probably a different type of apartment unit would probably make more sense. Then you wouldn't have that confusion over responsibilities, you know, between a condo association and a management company. But certainly, I mean, you know, there are other types of units that could be considered on the upper floors, perhaps.
Okay, and I, I very much lean toward the elimination of the podium proposal. I, the height of that building has bothered me. Also, the, both proposals make a lot better use of the available green space or open space potential for that building. And that bothered me too. I don't know if you reviewed any of my prior comments, but I was on that issue too.
Sure.
The parking, I am coming at it from possibly a different perspective than many commissioners. I am not, I'm not convinced that parking is a problem. Now, that doesn't, I haven't voted yet. And I have to ponder Commissioner Kemptner's point. That may influence me. But I, but I do believe that the proposed parking for these types of units, which are going to predominate in this development, is, it's sufficient. I mean, it's not ideal, but I am not a person that advocates paving over our community. I have never been coming from that perspective. I don't like that idea. So, I think we're, I think we're okay there unless somebody proves it otherwise to me. I could live, I could have lived with the townhouses, but nobody up here could agree on the, on the design. You know, there was so much back and forth about that and I thought they were a good transitional element. I didn't think of them so much in terms of housing contrast as I did of transitional element. But if you put a buffer, a green buffer along the street, that's a transitional element too and possibly a more pleasant one than seven townhouses would have been. So, I think we can, we can take some of the space that would have been used for townhouses and put the parking, put parking there that were eliminated from underneath the building. It's important to me, the streetscape is important to me and I agree with you that the passive use of the ground floor was not, just not desirable from a long-range perspective. So, those are my comments.
Yes, I think, I appreciate your work and I appreciate the input. And I think it's nice to have some fresh ideas on a concept I think we've all been kind of struggling with. So, I appreciate that. I too liked the townhouses. I think if we're going to eliminate them, that, that buffer needs to be quite substantial, in my opinion. I'm not sure that I see that on the current drawing, but it would need to be quite substantial. I also appreciate the injection of possible retail back into the conversation, even if it's only in the one space on the northeast corner. There might be some potential there for that. I appreciate the walkability, the improvement of the walkability of the design as well.
I would like just to clarify that if I could, please. I did mention retail, but actually, there, that space is programmed for building community space. So, it would have the potential in the future, if there was a market for it, for it to be retail. But I think you will probably find with a building like this that that space is going to be very, a very big marketing element for the resident, you know, to attract residents to this, this project. You'd be able to have that, that sort of workspace right there where they... Now, I don't want to take any business away from the gentleman back here, this resident downtown.
He left.
But, but actually, I think, you know, particularly for people that are students and things like that, having that, that nice office or, you know, people that work out of their homes, no, you know, no matter what, this will be a nice element of the project and it'll be, you know, an open, you know, glass. You'll see activity. It'll be really good to see that there.
Other question? In doing your study, you didn't review anything about traffic?
I, you know, I knew that was going to come up. I didn't see any traffic studies and certainly could provide you with more information. But again, as with parking, the, you know, most studies today are indicating that uses of this nature generate, you know, per unit about half the amount of traffic as a single-family home. So, yes, there will be traffic generated by, because of the volume. And that's why I felt it was important to eliminate that second curb cut on Oxford, okay? And I didn't see any reason for the turnaround in the front because I think that's just exacerbating a traffic problem. By turning around there, maybe dropping a resident off and then turning around and going in the back and parking, why have that many movements? I think it'd be much better just to consolidate that in the back. So, generally, again, uses of this nature generate per dwelling unit about half the number of trips per day as single-family housing.
Marty, you had another comment?
Yeah, I want to stick a, put a stick in the spokes here. You know, we're brainstorming here tonight and I'm just staring at the plan. It's, I can't tell if I'm better with it or without my glasses. It's right, that perfect distance. Green space. If we look at that building, getting rid of the pedestal, that's a fantastic idea. It'd be kind of cool to shove that south wing to the west. We have one big continuous green space. Now, we're going to lose a few units by doing that because you take the activity space, shove it west to the corner. You lose a few units because we're not going to lose parking. What if, going back to a mixture of units, we put those units on a fifth floor in the center north-south portion of that building? The two wings are fourth floors and Tim's talked about something about stepping the building up. We have a small fifth floor of primo penthouse units. I don't, I can't tell where the stairs are or how it works from here, but that's, that's a code issue. Just a thought, may, maybe a dumb thought, but we are brainstorming here. That gives us a huge green space. We pick up that extra sixty, sixty-five feet of green space and we get a continuous green space all the way from the north corner down to the drive to the south. Satisfies a lot of problems. Although, as trade-offs, there's always a trade-off. We got a little, we have a portion of a five-story building, but it's a stepped building. So, just a thought for whoever, for whatever it's worth. I'm not the designer, by the way.
And neither does Mr. Carlisle.
No, I know. That's why we're here, you know, that's why we're here tonight and, and just, just a thought.
Well, Mr. Carlisle, I appreciate, do you have another comment?
Yeah, because I'm sitting here looking at the plan and, and I know that the whole, and every concept that we've looked at or plan that we've looked at, that drive to the south of the building that, you know, bisects between the church and, and the building. And it's always kind of followed that path because there's a drive there now. And I've always thought, I'm sitting here now thinking, well, why not move that a little bit further north, get it away from the corner a little bit and give more green space there to the outside of the church, on the north side of the church? You know, maybe you can fit in some more handicap parking for the parishioners to then get in and out of the church. It's just a thought.
More comments?
Okay, go ahead.
Well... I tried. Mr. Carlisle, I'd like to thank you. So, this is certainly, in my experience, kind of an unusual situation that we were so far down the road with a project going on a little over a year, fifteen... that we were so far down the road with a project going on a little over a year, 15 months, or 18 months on this project, and to have you come in an advisory role, so it's, I appreciate-
A little unusual for me, too, by the way.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So we serve our clients how our clients want us to be served, so I get that, and I appreciate it, because it is difficult, and I think some of the questions here clearly are meant, or comments are meant for the designers, because you're not that, and you've brought some, you brought some interesting perspective to us, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate, you know, the difficulty of coming out and commenting on your peers' work. And it's a difficult position for everybody to be in. So I do appreciate that. So I don't really have any additional comments on this. I would just like to thank you for your time and your work product, and giving us food for thought, and some new ideas and new perspective on this. Now, we'll get to the public comment portion of this, and as I stated earlier, this is not a dialogue. These are comments to be made by residents. Four minutes will be maintained. And the applicants are no different than members of the community in coming forth. Please, we're not here to answer questions. We're here to get your comments on the record. And this is not a proposal, per se. These are comments and ideas that have been ferreted out, because, you know, the city has not been approached with this complex of a project in a very long time, and, or ever, I don't know, I mean, in my-
Possibly ever.
So we felt necessary to harness a few new resources. So we are not redesigning the project tonight. We don't have site plans. We don't have details, so we just want to make that noted. So your comments should be focused on ideas, and, and we'll listen and take them in. Mr. McLean will write furiously. And I would like to keep chatter in the audience to a minimum. That's on both sides of the aisle there, please. And please approach the podium, name, city, and please make your comments.
Kurt Height, Berkeley. First, I want to talk about the parking 2.0 should be the requirement, because, number one, when I thought to myself about the, my parents, my aunts, my uncles, all the aunts in my family, you know, probably eight different families that are empty nesters, they all have two or more cars. And I asked several people, many people that I know, and many said their parents also had two or more cars, and they were candidates, my parents are perfect candidates for wanting to move here. They've said repeatedly that this would be a location where they want Berkeley residents to be able to relocate to, to downsize, and my parents have two cars. So 2.0, and then you also got to consider, if it's a young professional that's not married, they're going to have visitors. Right now, the way it currently stands, there's no room for visitors, okay? Now, I wanted, I wanted to touch on, he talked about traffic, he said there wouldn't be no impact on traffic, and I think we talked about this before, and so I thought it would be a great time to remind you. He said there wouldn't be an impact on traffic, because, well, one unit wouldn't have as much traffic as a regular house, but let's count, there would probably be 10 houses in this area, and you're trying to put 110 units in the same area. So the impact on traffic would be there, and it would be substantial. Okay, now back again, and I think Commissioner Kempner. I really appreciate her bringing up the point of the church. I was going to bring it up myself. Amy Vance, who previously had listed a number of 170, which was very low as far as what they would acquire for parking for the church to have, which I don't know how she came up with that. I don't know how, what gave her the authority to change that. To me, it sounded like a recipe that would end up just very much like bensetta. If you took those 170 spots and looked at the south map of where they're going to create the new parking lot, as well as the new existing parking, or the future parking lot behind the church, and you counted those 170, they don't have 80 spots to even share. And I understand if there's two part-time uses, that they kind of make an agreement to share, but a full-time use cannot share their parking from a part-time use, because the full-time use is always going to be there. So if you allow that shared parking for the apartment, the church never has any parking lot. And we have so many churches around the city that already don't have parking. We don't want another one. So let's, let's, let's not try to change our rules here. I thought that the Carlyle woman, I appreciate them coming in and doing the work, but I was understanding that their role in it was going to be, number one, to make sure all the paperwork was there and proper and accurate, number two, to make sure that if there was any deviations, that it was noted, and how it was deviated, I did not know what their job was going to be to sell this project. The change is, yes, they look significant, but in reality, they're not, when you keep the townhouses and you flip the building, but you say you're not lowering it any, or you're only taking away the half of the parking in the front, you're really not making wholesale changes in it. If you want to eliminate how much parking is required, drop it down to three floors, put the front two areas as the office and the reading lounge, and therefore you have less units, you have about 90, you have less parking required, and I think the building could probably fit. If you go down to three floors and you do like your suggestion, and put a couple of townhouses in the back at the top of the building where they don't, they still would have minimal impact, and that would fit also. But if you do eliminate those townhouses and you put them on top as a fifth floor, you're going to need parking for them, because now you don't have the garages. Before, the townhouses had two parking per unit, because they had garages, and they weren't impacting the rest of the site. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Keith Owen. I was added to the Berkeley Coolidge LLC team because of the unusual nature of this whole project, as this project has gone forward. I also have the project architect, Joe Nowitzki, here, as well as representatives from the civil engineer, if you need to speak with him, and Brad Friedman from the development team. I'd like to offer a couple of pieces of information. One, we had the package prepared to submit for approval to be on the agenda for tonight. When Mr. Carlyle was hired, we decided it would, it made sense to get his input before we made the submittal. We believe that package incorporates comments from the commission and the community at the January meeting, and meets all of the site plan approval requirements. Additionally, in the review of Mr. Carlyle's items, our sense, and we have, by the way, submitted to be on the agenda with that set of plans for the meeting in May. We, of course, wanted to have the commission's input before we submitted the documents, but frankly, were concerned about losing another month in this process. We did engage with Mr. Carlyle and Mr. McLean during these meetings to look at changes to the project, to look at what worked. What we'd like to do is provide the best project for the community and the developer that we can, without losing another year in the construction cycle, and closing on the site with the archdiocese, so they can move forward with their activities. There are changes to the current plan that I think we can make that incorporate Mr. Carlyle's suggestions, particularly the notion of activating the Coolidge frontage at the first floor. Obviously, all of this discussion, almost all of it, is linked to the issue of parking that was addressed by one of the residents and by Mr. Carlyle. Some consensus has to be arrived on that before we can do anything. I mean, we really want this project to go forward. We certainly welcome Mr. Carlyle's input and the planning commission's input. The goal was to get the right project. I think the developer and the architect would be more than willing to look at this issue of repurposing those first-floor elements that face Coolidge. The townhouses, which I thought were important to a number of people, seem to be a whole lot less important tonight. So I, we certainly would be willing to let those go, or repurpose them for another use. If sales is an issue, then maybe it's rental. But certainly, we could let those go and create, you know, that, that larger buffer. A couple of the commissioners, I believe Mr. Smith and Mr. Richardson, spoke about the possibility of revised unit types at the fourth level. If we delete the podium, one of the things that we talked about was creating loft units that incorporated a fourth-floor unit with a loft configuration that would be up to level five. Based on building type and size, that area of that fifth-floor component would be limited to, I think it's either 30% or a third of the fourth floor. I'm watching my time. Do my other guys get to speak to in these rules? The reality is, lowering the podium, flipping the building, are all really significant design changes that can't, we can't offer up in a, without some input and guidance. And frankly, after roughly 18 months, we'd certainly like to move this project forward in a timely way. If there's some way that through Mr. Carlyle, some consensus for where the commission is on this project could be provided to the applicant, that certainly would be beneficial before any redesign was done. At this point, we are on the agenda for the May meeting, or at least have submitted for it. If there are recommendations you want to make to those documents for that meeting, we certainly would be willing to look at those. Look at that timing. Thank you very much.
Hi, Patty Curtis, Berkeley. What was the purpose of this study that the city, it says in the report, was retain this consulting firm? My understanding from previous planning commission meetings was that they were to ensure that the PUD application itself complied with all the application requirements. I see that this, and what you said at the beginning, Chairman Buckler, was that they were here to advise regarding ordinance and ordinance compliance, which is different than what I heard in previous meetings. So if that was their purpose, one or the other, why are they here instead advocating changes and throwing about a lot of, I think this parking, I think this, I think that, without any facts presented in their consulting report to back it up? And all of those are in favor of the developer. He comes across as an advocate for the developer, as opposed to a consultant who is hired to give an objective assessment of whether or not it meets the PUD application process, and whether or not it meets ordinance required. This is also perhaps looking at a complete redesign, so we may have to review the whole entire process. Number three, if they're just going to make it an apartment building, why a PUD at all? Why not just build an apartment building or renovate the school and apply for a regular site plan with perhaps a variance or two? The whole PUD thing seems unnecessary. And also, getting back to the hiring of the consultant, the planning commission, your duty is to review the project relative to the city ordinances. So why did we hire a consultant? Why were they brought in to do what is essentially the planning commission's job? I thought they were just here to review the application. If, also, if a complete application is not in hand, and I mean every single box checked off for the application process, we shouldn't even be looking at any of this right now. Regarding the church, do not ignore the part about the shared parking requirements. It is specifically prohibited in our ordinance that when the time of use overlaps, you can't enter into a shared parking agreement, and apartments are 24/7. Nobody can enter into a shared parking agreement with an apartment building to give them the required minimum. And also, at the same time, you're reducing the amount of parking that the church has. They will not have enough per ordinance. The church is not a party to this PUD. I totally grasped what Commissioner Kempner was saying. They cannot be given any variation on the existing ordinance. You would have to go before and get the ordinance actually changed. It sounds like that's what your consultant was suggesting. I'm kind of offended that he would suggest that we kind of toss aside some of these requirements. These are in our ordinances, and they're our laws, and they're there for a reason. They're here to protect everybody's investment. Also, the church, before they suggest that they only need 170 parking spaces for both the church and their office space, and their residential space there, they need to complete their renovation. They need to remove all those pews. They need to actually do the work and build their new parking lots, because they're not part of this PUD. They can't enter into it until they have enough parking for themselves. Thank you.
Hi, Wendy Zabramsky, Berkeley. I have several points, and a few of these was for Mr. Carlyle, or what I want to say about it. What he says about the PUD is mute. He's not a city planner here. About changing the parking of the church, he really has no business talking about that. And saying he knows about the issues in Berkeley, that's a mute point. He was hired for this, and evidently not quite, like we were explained. Also, even if young professionals and empty nesters would have to share in the rent, because I don't know even any young professional or empty nester that can afford $1,500 to $2,500 a month for rent. So they would be sharing in the studio apartment, perhaps, which is a den, okay? Also, we are not Ann Arbor, and we do not have the same bus system that Ann Arbor has. Not even close here in Berkeley. Not yet, maybe down the road, but we're not there. Marty mentioned the trade-off from day one, and this developer was in the height, and, and... They have resisted, they have refused to do any trade-off. They have not negotiated with you guys at all. It has been what they wanted, 134, eight units from the get-go. You have suggested, you know, alternatives, and they have come back with nothing. And I agree with Patty Curtis. I believe he's selling your LaSalle project. I don't know who's paid him, but even if they paid him in escrow, you know, that's not his job. You guys sent him to consult about all the paperwork. The last time LaSalle development was in front of us was, they didn't have nearly what they needed to be required to get the PUD through, to get the application through. You know, this is, this is just like way off of LaFille, okay? You know, argued about needing less parking, and of course, he lives in Ann Arbor where there's good buses. But I let myself live very near the downtown, and over the last several years, I have seen very much increase in required parking for downtown areas. So I can only imagine that there's not going to be, even though we have buses and Uber, you know, we're still talking, you know, the parking needs to be kept at the two. We don't need to change our parking for them. That's not the way it works. Thank you.
Hi, Ryan Gazun. I also live in Berkeley. I'm Kepling. This is just a general idea. A lot of the studies, which I haven't really read, because I'm not a city planner, I own car washes, but a lot of the studies, a lot of the areas where there's reduced parking and increased walkability have a mass transit system, a lot more complete than ours here in Metro Detroit. And not having a mass transit system, would be great if we had one, means we're, we need more, we need more parking for people, even people in studio or, or, or in studio or one-bedroom apartments. Thank you.
Any more comments? All right, on to, we don't have any action on, that we're going to take on this. This was just a discussion. So on to liaison reports. Environmental committee?
The environmental committee did meet. We are pleased to report that the city council honored-
Shh, please.
-Mr. Gary Shea as the Berkeley Recycler of the Year. Mr. Shea was nominated by our committee, and he certainly has had a lifelong commitment to reduce, reuse, recycle that we could all emulate. Our next meeting will be a day after tomorrow evening. And we look forward to participating in Berkeley community activities and being a more visible part of the community.
Chamber?
Chamber. I did attend the chamber meeting. There's a lot of discussion about their, you know, building up right now for the Art Bash in June and the Street Art Fair in July, so.
Okay.
So the Art Bash, to let everybody know, is the second Saturday of every month, and I think the Street Art Fair is going to be the third, right? It's the third Saturday in July?
Second.
Second Saturday, okay, second Saturday in July. No, I think it's the third.
Well, it follows the second Friday, so it must be the second. Unless it starts, is July 1st on the sand, or is it?
It's a half moon.
No, it's the 14th.
No, it's the 14th? Okay, all right. Okay, all right. So those are the big things they're working on. Also, a lot of talk, too, about the Cruz Fest.
Joe left us a memo on the DDA-
Joe left us a memo on the DDA. Do we have a ZBA report? Do we have a ZBA liaison?
No.
Council is not yet appointed.
For ZBA, well, he's for the DDA. We have the minutes from him in our package, but the ZBA. Marty?
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, I'm not an official liaison to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, but I've attended the
Shh, please. Thank you.
I've attended several of their past meetings. I used to be their liaison, but because of work situations, I couldn't continue. But I'm gonna try to attend, and they asked me to pass along a few things. Basically, their summer program, not their summer programs, their programs are well-attended. Attendance is trending up, and they see a growing young family participation. So, that's good news for Berkeley. They've struck a deal with the school board. Summer camp will be in Anderson in lieu of the ice arena this year. So, with everything going on, you know, with November, that's a pretty good deal, and it's good that the city with the Parks and Rec is able to strike a deal with the school board. That's a good thing. And they asked me to pass along the American Legion Honor Guard fundraiser on April 21st, which I guess was last week, so. A lot of good that does. I'm sorry about that, but.
It's like a newspaper you're talking about.
Yeah, I'm reporting. It's an editorial here. May 6, they have the Friends of the Park and Rec cleanup and update, and that's posted on their website where that is, but they're always looking for volunteers to keep our parks cleaned and updated. So, thank you for your time on that.
All right.
I also, in my, oh, nevermind, that's not liaison. Apologies.
Well, I watched the city council from afar, I wasn't in town, and I recall the new public safety officer, and there were, there was a lot of items on the agenda, but not anyone in particular that pertained to us. I think the Complete Streets was two weeks prior that they had adopted that, so we have some work to do, turns out, with that, and we'll have to figure out when to slot that in and what we're gonna do for that, so. All right, round the board to comments. We'll start with Ms. Kempner.
So, our open house was today. We had some people show up. It's a good start, right? And hopefully, as we have ongoing outreach things, master plan and all of that, we get a little bit, few more people each time, so that we really have an engaged community. So, I thank you for those people who did show up, and for you who didn't, come next time.
Again, as always, appreciate the involvement. Keep coming. Nothing further.
I'd like to spend some time, but given you're seeing the hour here, I'm gonna just summarize things. I completed the Best Practices Training Workshop for redevelopment-ready for the communities with Tim and Vivian, and the last three sections of this project involved discussions. It was an all-day affair, and we talked about recruitment and education. We talked about redevelopment-ready, how do you develop and get things ready, and this can be a very involved process. It will mean, in some instances, as we develop strategies, that will have to be referenced to the new master plan. We talked about the community prosperities, how we bring entail other people within our community using our local financing, and if possible, looking at our financial institutions, looking at all of our groups that we have within the city, the Downtown Development Authority. We'll be involved with residents, we'll be involved with community groups, and we'll be talking to environmental groups, and it's gonna be an involved process. It will involve almost all of the city departments, I think, as we looked at it when I, after I got out of there, and Tim can refer to it a little bit, talk a little bit about it if he so desires. But I found it very fascinating, and the end product could help the city along quite well. We'll probably develop similar to what we did when we did the master plan catalytic projects. They recommend three strategic projects that you look at and choose one and develop it. You might even hire someone to assist you to prepare it, prepare a site plan or architectural, some loose schematic designs to get your, to whet the appetites of some developers to come in and help you move the projects along. So, I found it very fascinating and interesting, and I will say this, that it's going to be an involved process, but when we get to the end, I think the city will be much better off.
Mr. Redd?
Just kind of to go along with Ms. Kempner's comments about the open house we had today. I know I wasn't here back in March when we scheduled it, but, you know, I think it might have been better to have held that on the date that we normally do a work session. We do have that date and time reserved. I think it would be maybe even better attended if we do things like that. Like even the LaSalle applicant, if they wanna come in and talk, I think sometimes work sessions are great opportunities to kinda have a bit of a back-and-forth with an applicant and work out some of the details rather than trying to have them here and then send them away to do more changes. So, I'd like just to see, you know, I know it's another meeting for all of us, but I think it can maybe save us some time here, too, so.
Kowalski?
I just had one comment or question for the staff and maybe the city attorney on the LaSalle. If we can have some confirmation when they do come back, whether that Section 138 to 18, the shared parking, does allow for the opportunity for the church to share their parking? Just a definitive answer on that would be helpful.
Mr. Richardson?
My comments are about follow-up. I think today's open house was a well-organized event. I give you credit for that, Madam Chair.
He did it.
It was, he did it. I give the city credit, but it was modestly attended, and I think we need to pay attention to follow-up. I think we need to be aware of the need to schedule additional events when the time seems appropriate to discuss what we learned at an earlier event and how we're going to apply it, and whether the community goes along with some of our ideas there. So, I'm hoping we can kinda build on this and not just look at it as a one-off along the same lines. We have a Complete Streets ordinance now, and we, certainly, there's a commitment on my part to build this community going forward in an environmentally sound way, and we had the capital improvement plan tonight, all these projects. I'd like the city to be constantly aware of the environmental aspect of this decision-making with respect to both the capital improvements and the purchasing. I think there is awareness, but I would like it to be routinized and institutionalized. I'd like to be assured of that. Maybe there's more going on there than I even know about, but we need to be thinking green when we make our decisions. We need to be thinking about energy efficiency. It's gonna benefit our bottom line as well as the environment, and it'll make our community more attractive to, a place to live as well if we incorporate these kinds of principles in our day-to-day planning. And, you know, like I said, maybe I need more information about just how you're going about it, Mr. McLean and Mr. Baumgartner as well, but those are my comments, and take them for what they're worth.
Mr. Smith?
The last couple of months, I attended a couple of things. The Public Workshop Number Two regarding the DDA at the Collaborative Center back in March, fairly well-attended, and a lot of, there were apparently a lot of ideas that came across. And then I attended, as did some of my fellow commissioners who were there, and I believe there were also fellow commissioners at the March 15 city meeting regarding the fire, I'm sorry, the city hall renovation, and then on, again, on April 17 regarding the new proposed community center. They were okay-attended. I got the impression from the city staff, they were a little disappointed in the attendance of these programs. I think there's another round for all three of them. Next week, I believe, is the Road Millage. I could be off, I didn't write it down, but there's another round of all three of these meetings, and I think it would be a good thing for the residents of Berkeley to be engaged and show up. These are big items, and we make the decision of whether they pass or not. So, it would be a good idea to be able to make these meetings. And at tonight's open house, I was asked to give a shameless plug to the Athletic Boosters. You know who, they have a road rally May 5, and you can get the information on their Facebook page and their website and all that, but, so, they're always looking for more attendees.
Tim Canox, and too.
That's coming up. That's this Friday, I believe. So.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
I think we'd be remiss if we didn't mention that, for those that could not attend tonight's open house, that the survey, I believe, Tim, is still available through Friday?
Yes.
I believe, so please participate.
Well, that was my comment, so. Okay. Mr. McLean, do you have any comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, all right. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.